Good evening. Today is June 27th and this is a special meeting to go over the 2014 fiscal budget and some transfers for the 2013 budget. At this time, I'd like everyone to please rise and salute the flag.
[Inaudible]
Roll call of the members. Counselor Arigo?
Here.
Here, Counselor Correggio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas.
Here.
Here, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Penta?
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers.
Here.
Here, Counselor Riordan.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselsky is absent. And President Gennino?
Here.
Here. A quorum is present. There's two late communications that have been submitted. What's the will of the council? So at this time, we're going to take up the first communication to deal with the fiscal 13 budget before we move into the 14. So, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to speak on some of the transfers.
Thank you very much, Madam President, members of the council. These are, as you can see, dated June 25th. Our auditor, once we had final numbers to close out our FY 13 budget, was able to put all this together so we could get these accounts balanced. We had some overages in some accounts. We had some shortfalls in others. And as is the case all the time, you know, we go into this mold where we transfer money from these accounts that have these overages and try to take care of accounts that had these shortfalls for one reason or another. You know, you've had conversations, I know, during the deliberations for the FY 14 budget with different department heads. They may have indicated at that time where they needed more money. There may have been conversations about how they may have not, you know, maybe have not needed some money in other accounts. But for whatever reason, you know, this is something that I think most members of the council that have been here for a long time have seen and recognize, you know, is something that is done all the time. So this is just so we can close out our year. And our auditor is here, in case you have any specific questions, be happy to answer them for you.
Okay? Thank you. So at this time, I'll entertain any questions from the council. Do any counselors have questions of the mayor? Counselor Arigo?
Thank you, Madam President. I have one question about, as I look through this, we got this about two minutes ago. The transfer to the solicitor, the city solicitor for eminent domain, $50,000, what was that in reference to? It looks like it was a new, like there was no money appropriated for eminent domain, so I just am interested in that.
That money, there's two invoices for legal fees associated with the eminent domain taking of the property off of Broadway. So we need to cover those costs. And we thought we would do it this way instead of including it as part of a borrowing.
What properties off of Broadway?
If I could just mention, we had, as you know, when the council voted on the eminent domain takings, we had to not only come up with the money to buy the properties, but as, you know, we also had to hire, you know, outside legal help to go through this eminent domain process that specializes in eminent domain takings. Dave Rogers, who the city used, I believe, on the Paul Revere School, as well as appraisals on all these properties. And there were several appraisals, you know, obviously, just St. Mary's and the Baletta property alone was a whole bunch of separate parcels and different, you know, so that took some time, as well as these properties on Fernwood Place. So between the appraisals and the legal fees, that's where that number comes from.
So this is all related to McKinley, to the Hill School, then?
Exactly. It's all part and parcel to the new Hill School.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
My only other question is, and I haven't done the math yet, but do these, I'm assuming that they net out, that the from, the to and from net out?
It's just really to and from.
Yeah.
So I think we're saying the appropriation at all, it's just shifting money.
Sure, yep.
We have some excesses. And for me, here, some accounts fluctuate depending on what's happening with the rehiring of fire and police officers. So a lot of what happens, we haven't hired employees fast enough, then you have overtime. So it's just shifting money.
Sure, I'm sorry.
What I was just explaining was, from year to year, it changes. It depends on how many people retire or how many openings we have and how quickly we rehire individuals for certain job positions. And when we haven't replaced job positions, we end up having more overtime. So a number of those transfers have to do with that type of thing. So we need to move money from one place or the other. And then things like eminent domain comes up. If there's some excess money in various accounts from a particular year, we will transfer monies to cover those costs if we can.
Thank you.
Instead of doing a borrowing for something like that. Any other questions?
Thank you, Laurie. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Madam President. Laurie, we just received this five minutes ago, except for, you know, we deliberated on the budget for the last five or six nights, all right? I would appreciate if we could have had this earlier because as we're going through, looking at cuts, we could make cuts that basically do not support this. And a good example would be court time and overtime. Councils in the past have always reduced that. Now, if we're negative $308,000 just in court and overtime, and we went to the budget as presented, we would have probably made a reduction in that, not knowing that at this point in time, you had $308,000 negative. Do you follow what I'm saying?
But the $308,000, that, the overtime was short. So that money, whereas, and that's because some of the positions weren't rehired. So we're shifting money from one of the line items for those jobs to the overtime account.
I just wish the subcommittee had received this document.
I understand. And normally, I tried to give this to you sooner, this year.
This is 20 minutes before we're going to vote on the budget in its entirety, and then this comes in. You understand what I'm talking about?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Guanasso?
Thank you, Madam President. I was just noticing in the police budget itself, there are over $400,000 in monies that weren't used, and that's-
I'm sorry, Arthur, I didn't hear what you just said.
In the police budget, the three line items?
Yeah.
There are over $450,000 in monies that weren't used. In one particular category, the holiday pay, almost 50% of the budget wasn't used. Is there, what's the reason for that?
Well, that was, last year, there was a mistake made in the budget. So the monies were used for the overtime and for the hiring of the new police officers that we hired.
Now, on the other budget, the line item, thank you for that comment, but the other, the police sergeant's regular salary, that's $100,000 unused.
I'm sorry, which one was that?
Is that a full position, the last, from the police sergeant regular salary? There's $108,500 not used. Is that one particular salary?
No, no. What happened in that situation, I believe, was that somebody wasn't promoted to a lieutenant, you know, in a timely way. And so that monies was being used for overtime because we needed more people on the street. So if we don't hire people or promote them, we have that money available to cover the overtime that's happening. So I try to make sure that the monies that we've been appropriated for payroll in total by a department is able to cover whatever's happening from year to year, depending on what the need is.
On a quick observation-
So you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying.
We're using, in a normal year, you would hire people and have people at the full contingent.
I understand how it works.
Okay, all right.
What I'm concerned about is this, very simply. Had we received this earlier?
Right.
The two categories that weren't the biggest transfers from, police and fire, and those were pretty much documented prior to the last month. I mean, we knew months, a month ago, that this money was going to, pretty close this was going to be left over.
Right.
And we're saying if we got that earlier during the deliberations, or even before that, we would, the letter of transmissal now wouldn't have been that great. But then when we pick up here in the 11th hour and we see these staggering numbers, you know, it doesn't give us the comfortable feeling to say that we know what the heck is going on here because that's a lot of money for the last, and I understand exactly what you're doing. But I'm just saying, I think that possibly it could have been better used if we did it a month ago because these numbers were there, sticking out a month ago.
Well, a month ago, that's why I gave you the other transfer. So I went through everything at that point and I identified the best that I could. You have to understand-
Well, I'm just saying that, you know, to circumvent an impact on a council when they get this, like, whoa, this comes out and it strikes you out pretty big.
I-
But had this been received earlier, all the rest of them would have been, you know, we understand that's the cost of doing business. You're not going to expend every line item that you budget for, and you're going to have to add to others. And that's, any business does that. So, but I'm just saying, if we got that a little earlier, you wouldn't be getting any inquiries because people would understand that. But when they saw the staggering numbers here, say, wow, why wasn't this given to us earlier? And that's all. That's the nature of what we're trying to get at.
Okay.
No fault to anybody, but I'm just saying that in the future, I would really appreciate it if it could be given to us a lot earlier.
Well, I think we've always given it to you. Everything is usually earlier than this comes.
Yeah.
So if we were able to get the budget to you sooner, then I would have been able to get you this sooner as well.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that. But what I'm seeing is our impact and our reaction when we saw that, don't take exception to it because it's sort of like, wow, this is pretty alarming.
I understand. But that's why I'm here, is because I wanted to be able to answer whatever questions you had.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you for your help, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
Can I just say one thing? Counselor, if I may, could I just say, you know, if you look, like, we're talking about that holiday account, and then you just, you flip it over and you see where it actually went, it actually went to the overtime, court overtime.
Right.
Which, you know, I mean, that was just, that was an allocation issue. That was not an actual dollar.
But I'm just saying, Mayor, that if we got it, like, earlier, which we could have because these numbers are so big, they didn't occur two weeks ago.
Yeah.
It would have been less of an impact than we're ready to vote on the new budget for 14, and we see this to close out 13. That's all.
I think-
I understand what it is to close books.
I, you know, I'll be the first one to say, I put a lot of pressure on them during this budget session because of the way we changed the budget.
Right.
I don't anticipate the next budget to be that way. But I have to say, and, you know, I know it's hard for you guys to get something 15 minutes and say, okay, jeez, we got to close our books. But, you know, I did put a lot of pressure on, particularly on our financial departments, to change this budget to a place where I thought would be better for the city council. It, in some ways, has put a lot more pressure on the council, and I recognize that and I apologize for that. Next year, you won't be faced with that.
We're getting through the pains of it this year, Mayor, and next year it's going to be cupcake.
If you allow it to be chalked up to growing pains, I'd be very, very happy.
It's going to be, it's growing pains, and we all know that now, and I understand that.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Yeah, I understand that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Riordan?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to clarify what's going on here, transfer, in particular, Laurie, the first, second item on the to side, the collected treasures workers' comp medical benefits. I see that the transfer is only $10,000 on a $30,740.52 deficit. So we're going to be carrying over that $20,740.52 into the new year.
I'm sorry. So I just got the transfers that I had given you a month ago. So I just got confirmation that you were going to approve those. So those are not included in these numbers. So the original, the original request for transfers would, I believe, was transferring another, I forget what that amount was, but I think it was like $20,000 or $30,000. And I'm projecting that there'll be additional expenditures. See, at this time of the year, I haven't received all the expenses, so I do a lot of guestimates on what I think the numbers are going to be. And I go back and I look month by month and see what the history has been, and I make the best guess that I can.
So your guess is that $10,000 will-
We will need an additional $10,000 on top of what I've already asked for, based on a month ago, given, and this is one of those accounts that it's difficult to estimate out what it's going to be. And because we had discussed sending in a separate, a second transfer request, I was a little more conservative the first time around. And this time, I said, well, we need to put money in here because I really do think that we're going to need it. Now, when the final bill comes in, it could be a little bit less, and I may not have needed it for that particular account.
Right.
But I don't want to be in a deficit position, so I'm generally more conservative.
All right, I understand. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. At this time, if there are no further questions, I'd like the clerks to take a roll call. This is on transfers from various accounts totaling $910,188.25 to various other accounts. Counselor Arigo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky is absent, and Council President Gennino.
Yes.
Yes, the transfers have been approved.
Okay, thank you.
So at this time, we'll resume back to our regular order of business for the evening and talk about the report of Chairman Arigo for the Ways and Means Committee. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Madam President. Over the last two weeks, the city council's Ways and Means Subcommittee meeting has been meeting to go over the fiscal year 2014 budget. And we've had a number of hearings, and we've come to what I think were some appropriate and meaningful decisions about some of the line items that we saw. And one thing that I do want to note, I know that there's a late communication for the transfer of $1.5 million from stabilization. You know, I do still have a problem with that. I think that these cuts, in concert with money that will be available to the city through an auction sale of property, would be able to keep us from having to dip into the stabilization fund. With that said, I will go through the recommendations of the committee. And there are a number of other late items that the, that the mayor had sent down to amend the budget, so we'll also go through those. But I will start with the proposed reductions by the committee that were discussed last night. I think you all have a copy of each reduction. They total $519,980. And that would bring the budget to $153,000, $540,000, and $190,000. In addition to the decreases that were recommended, Counsel Guanasso did, in his wisdom, recommend a couple of increases that pertain to ordinances that we had, an ordinance that we had passed earlier in the year. There were $1,600 made available for noise detection equipment for both the police and inspectional services. And there was a $10,000 increase recommended by the committee for an increase in the city solicitor salary. With that, I will move to the other, to the other pieces that the mayor had sent down. There were additional items such as breaking out the engineering department, which was a technical fix of the budget, that the committee had favorably passed. There was an increase to the weights and measures line item of $7,332, which was another technical fix, according to the administration. And that was favorably decided upon by the committee. There was an increase in the health division of $10,287, which was favorably reported out. And an increase in the number of clerks for the city council from four to five. And that was also reported out favorably. In addition, we, there was a communication to increase the council office supplies line item by $15,840, also known as our expense account. And that was rejected by the committee. With that, Madam President, I don't know if you want to take this up as a whole or take up each individual amendment that the mayor has asked for, but-
I believe that since the subcommittee was unanimous, I can't see a lot of discussion. And we had five meetings that were open to the entire body. So if there was discussion on individual amendments, I'm going to ask if the council has comments to make before we do come to a vote.
Right. I have one question before we do that, Madam-
Yes, Counselor Haas.
What we neglected, and we discussed it at length, is we like to have in the next budget presented by the mayor and the staff, the parking department expenses and receipts as part of it. I know it's a wash account, but we'd like to know, you know, what the expenses are and how many people on the payroll. So can you make that happen for next year? Thank you, sir.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you. What I didn't hear, on the communications, I didn't hear the OPEB study?
Yep, the OPEB, I'm sorry, I did.
And the finance director's page, or the correction on his page.
Yeah, there was a technical fix to the director of finances page, and there was a $20,000 increase for an OPEB study, which is other post-employment benefits.
Benefits, which is required by law.
Right. That was my fault.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Just want to clear it.
Thank you. So I believe I'll just let the council kind of go down because I'm sure everyone has a comment to make since it's such a big issue. So Counselor Correggio, did you have a comment or question? No? Counselor Guanasso?
The only compliment, comment I can make, Madam President, is that the, a lot of accolades should be given to the Chair of Ways and Means and also to the membership that attended every meeting and worked very hard. I attended myself every meeting with the exception of last, and I had a very personal commitment last night. But I did submit my recommendations, as was recommended by Chairperson Arigo in his outline that all the councils did receive. So I applaud everybody for their efforts, the mayor and his staff and everybody for coming forward, and certainly inspectional services and the financial director for coming forward and giving us the real description of what's taking place. And that's pretty much what we did. In terms of reductions and stuff, you know, it's, yeah, we have a few in there, but I think what happened was, it made all the council and anybody at home who took the time to watch them, it gives a little insight as to what the makeup of our city is and how it's run and the finances of it. And it's a long process. It's not a thing that you can just run with because I know, being in the business world for most of my life and in working with budgets, it's very, very difficult to submit a budget a year and a half in advance and have it come out almost close. And so that's why these adjustments are necessary, and I understand that. And so I give everybody credit for working hard and keeping our city going. And I give a lot of credit to this city council for being the watchdog that they are in reviewing everything, and also the mayor's office for keeping us abreast as to what's going on. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well said, Counselor. Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Madam President. This, surprising as it may, this is the first time I've been on the Ways and Means Committee. As mayor, it's different, you're running the show, as Mayor Vizzo was doing at present time. I found the meetings extremely informative, and I think the financial staff did a great job, along with our city council, our chairman, Mr. Arigo. We addressed the issues. As I said earlier this evening, I wish we could have had these transfers prior to tonight, but again, so be it. Hopefully, it won't happen next year. The question I have, as most of us have, is the stabilization fund, using a million five. When that comes up for debate, I'd like to speak about that. But I think it was a job well done from everyone involved, and I did attend every meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Penta?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll echo some of the sentiments that Counsel Haas said. I mean, I give credit to the Chairman of Ways and Means. I conducted court a few, I made as many as I could, even though I didn't have a vote on it. And getting to that point is, I'm going to ask that these things take it up individually, not as a whole. I had no vote. So am I for these cuts? Some. Am I against some? Yes. So I'm going to ask, it's only fair to the councils that weren't on the committee, because we weren't asked to take a vote, and I understand that. It's a committee vote, which, as I said, it was three votes, at least eight councils to vote. So I'll ask them to be separate. One other statement I'd like to make, a lot of stuff we got late, the budget we got late, and I'm sure Counsel Haas, being a mayor, understands how in-depth the budget really is. This is actually, and I give the mayor credit, this is actually our first budget. You have to go over in January, he took over half a budget. This is really our first budget. You did what the council asked, you made it very friendly to, easy to look at. I commend you on that. But trying to do the right thing, you're getting slammed for being late and everything else. But numbers always work themselves together. Numbers don't lie, and numbers are what they are. I know even the Ways and Means Committee agreed with the financial director that, yeah, we'll cut these, and probably some of them, 80, 90%, we're going to have to come back in during the course of the year. I have one question for George, and that's probably for a later vote. The $700,000 on the properties that were sold this year, can you use them in this budget to offset the budget?
We can't.
Well, that's the point I want to make, because we keep using that $700,000 to offset it so you only take $700 less out of stabilization fund. And that's why I want to know from you that you can't use it in this budget to balance it.
No, you can't, you can't use it in this budget, according to the laws of Massachusetts. What happens to it, it drops to the bottom line. So when the free cash is calculated for next year, what happens is that $735,000 is going to be a plus right off the bat to the calculation.
So, so just short and sweet, I don't want to get into a long dialogue here. The bottom line, basically, it drops to the bottom line. The $700,000 you're taking out of stabilization is basically this money, but it's only being used to the end of the year, basically.
No.
I mean, until the next budget.
Well, no, what's happening is, short and sweet, is that $735,000 cannot be re-appropriated. It has to drop to the bottom line, but it will resurface next year as part of the free cash.
That's right. And you could use that free cash to go back in the stabilization. All I'm saying is, you're really using it, the stabilization, borrowing it basically till next year with the $700,000, in reality. That's the way I look at it.
You could look at it that way.
All right. I thought I had the right answer, just wanted to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Powers, did you have any? Nope. Counselor Riordan?
Thank you very much, and I do want to congratulate the Ways and Means Subcommittee for the work done, especially the chairman. Three points I would like to make. First of all, as Counsel Penta suggested, although many of us were at most of the meetings, including myself, not all of us were here for all of the discussions. So what I'd ask Counselor Arigo to do, since I agree with Counselor Penta that we should vote on each line item individually, I'd ask Counselor Arigo to kindly give us a synopsis of the reasoning behind each of the line item cuts. I think it makes sense to hear that at this point, we're going to be voting on it. And lastly- And lastly, I think, we've talked about the process, and I absolutely agree, the mayor's done, made great strides in improving this system, but there's a lot more yet to do. And the fact that we're sitting here with two members short at this very vital vote is, I think, indicative of how much more we have to do. I'm going to propose, assuming I'm around here next year, that the chair, the next chairman of the Ways and Means Subcommittee, schedule these hearings well in advance, in fact, at the beginning of the year. And I'm going to ask the mayor to get us this budget the first week in June. Based on that, I'm going to ask, again, that the president and the Ways and Means Committee Chairman schedule in January these budget hearings, so we know full in advance when we're going to, it doesn't necessarily have to be who, but it should be when, so that everybody knows what their obligations are to attend these meetings and listen, and that we can have a meaningful discussion that doesn't come two days before the end of the year. It just makes no sense. I mean, we deliberate these things, and we're always in a hurry, we're always asking questions at the last minute, maybe not the real questions, or the right questions. So we need a little more time on this, and we need a little more, we need a little more organization on it, and I'd be, and that's the last I'll say about this process. Again, I believe that we need to hear now, at this point, prior to the, prior to a vote, a quick synopsis of the reasoning behind these budget cuts. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. My two colleagues to my right pretty much summed up what I was going to say about, number one, there was some talk about that there wasn't going to be any discussion, because the Ways and Means Committee met, voted, made its cuts, and that that's the way this meeting is supposed to be run. Well, that's not how it works up here. Some of us were not on the committee, some of us did not have votes, we're not, if you're not on a committee, you're not obligated to be at that committee. Some of us study this budget at home like it's our Bible and know what's in it inside and out. I too want to see the items voted on separately, and I want to even go further than the document that the chairman gave out, and go to the line items that were kind of left out of this last final document that's put in front of us here. Each, I think there's seven or eight line items that should be discussed, and I actually have other cuts that I want to make. And that's the way this works. It's not, it's not-
Point of information, Madam President, the additional items, additional items that were submitted by the mayor were submitted to the entire council. So we have those, you should have those in your packet as you were-
I'm not saying I don't.
Going through-
I'm saying I want to discuss them.
With a fine-tooth comb at home.
I'm saying I want to discuss them. That wasn't quite a point of information, it was a bit sarcastic, but we'll accept it anyway. Bottom line is here, I have other cuts that I want to make, separate and apart from the Ways and Means Committee.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor. After listening to everyone's, I have several comments of my own in regards to the meetings. First of all, this has been a very strenuous process for all of the members of the council, and especially the members of the committee. We're lucky that we had a very dedicated committee that attended all the meetings, and we really did go through this budget very carefully for the time allotted to us. And I really do give a lot of credit to Chairman Arigo, he did a good job organizing it, and Counselor Ridden. I think that that was a really good idea in terms of having it set up in advance, so for future councils, that might be a really great way to look at it, because it is a very serious process, and it would be good to have dates ahead of time. After that, I would just like to say that on Wednesday, the 26th, the agenda for that subcommittee meeting was the city council's discussion and recommendations. It was not the subcommittee's discussion and recommendations. We opened that subcommittee meeting up to the entire council to make any recommendations to the budget, so that at this meeting, we could run it like a regular meeting would run. You know, if you have an appointments committee meeting, you have the subcommittee meeting to have the people come up and to speak, and we vote on it, and at that time, we have a discussion. And then at a regular council meeting, we then vote on the recommendation of the committee. So I would like to make sure that the respect for that subcommittee is kept as we move forward. At that time, Counselor Arigo, would you like to answer some of the questions that I believe Counselor Ridden had as to the line items?
Absolutely. And I will, I will say at the outset that any member was more than welcome to come to the five meetings that we held over the last two weeks. It was an aggressive schedule, we didn't have a lot of time, we got the budget late, as everybody knows, and, you know, we spent probably an average of at least two hours to three hours a night discussing these recommendations. And the chair would have been more than willing to hear any recommendations that the, that the council has, any member had. You know, I, I did my due diligence and looked at this budget, trying to do the best thing for the city, trying to do my job as the chair of Ways and Means, and I would have been more than willing to hear anybody's recommendation. With that said, I will go through the, the reductions that were presented this evening, and I'll just walk, walk the council through some of the discussion that we had. If, if everybody wants to take out their budget book, we can start at page 26, the workers' comp unemployment line item.
Madam Chairman, Madam Chair President.
Yes, Counselor.
All due respect to everybody here at the council. We got the notification, we got notification of when the meetings were, when the discussions were to be had. Now we're going over to break down all of our deductions. This was available to the city council, and every councilor could talk on these. If they wanted to spend the time and listen to it, we could have done that. But I take the exception to this, that the, the subcommittee and their other members who showed up at these meetings had every opportunity to understand every cut, if they wanted to put the time in. Now we're going to rehash every cut again, and now we're going to go in and make additional motions? That's ludicrous. We've, we've already done, we've, we've already set out six days of work here. And it was, as you aptly said, discussions by recommendations of the city council. And every member that came here that wasn't a non-member was allowed to speak and put their input. Everybody, I've been in this council for a lot of years, and I understand how it works very, very well. And I'll tell you one thing, anytime you wanted to speak during those deliberations or the membership of the appointment, or whether it be the Ways and Means, you had, you have an opportunity to speak. Now is the last of the hour. Now is the hour that we, we make a decision up or down on the recommendations of the, of the appointments of the Ways and Means. So that's my reading on it, and I think it's been done this way since forever and a day, and I don't think there's anything wrong with it.
Point of, point of information, Mr. Madam President. Madam President, I wasn't on the committee, I made three meetings. One of them, I came, and unfortunately, I was in a hurry, left the meeting, and it started 15, 20 minutes later. Had no one's fault. But for the council to say that we're asking for a little more information, you might have stepped out of the room, you might have got a phone call, you might have went to the bathroom, you might have missed something. There's not many cuts here. What Counselor Ridden asked, I think, is a very simple thing, and I think, I'm sure the chairman's willing to give, give his opinion on it, which he has. Now, Counselor Guanasso, you are on the committee. You weren't here last night, you didn't vote on any of them. Did you miss anything? Did you miss anything last night? Did you know the cuts? Did you know the cuts we made last night? How would you know that?
Point of information, the, point of information that-
Yes, Counselor.
The chair did, did pass out to the members of the committee a potential list of cuts. So there were, there was some-
Counselor, Mr. Chairman, you're 100% right. You did.
Excuse me, counselors. At this time, we're going to carry on with the-
There were some.
Excuse me?
I have the floor, Counselor. I didn't interrupt you when you spoke. I'd appreciate a little courtesy.
You addressed me, I didn't address you.
You spoke.
I spoke, but I didn't address you.
The point of information I'm making is, not every council is here every minute of those meetings, not even, not even the committee members, my point is. So for someone to ask a simple explanation of what five or six cuts is, I think that's being unrealistic.
Counselor Penta, I completely understand your recommendation, and I respect it, and Counselor Arigo is going to read them. I just ask that, for the interest of time-
And I have one point of clarity, please, our inquiry.
Yes, Counselor.
Am I not going to be allowed to make a cut?
Counselor, you're a voting member of this council, you are welcome to make anything you may.
Okay, thank you. Because the way I understood my colleague to my right is that I should be stifled and keep my mouth shut, because I didn't make the recommendation when he deemed it appropriate.
No.
The, the way it works up here is I'm elected like you're elected to represent the people, and I have the time, and I have the right to make any inquiry, any cut. I know you meant what you said, but you're wrong. Dead wrong.
Excuse me, counselors. At this time, we're going to talk about what is on the agenda for the budget. Anything that is submitted tonight is a late communication to the budget, essentially. What was proposed for tonight was set in stone, the members have had it for several days. It was not done in private. Every member of this council and of this community was more than welcome to come to our council chambers. Our doors are always open.
That's not the way the city council works. I have the right to submit a cut tonight.
Well, you know what? We're working on this a way that is productive.
I have a right to submit a cut tonight.
I understand that, Counselor, and I'm going to finish my comment. So the way that we're going to handle this is handle the original cuts, and then we'll move forward and take out any late communications to the budget.
Thank you, I apologize, I didn't let you finish.
If there are other items that need to be addressed, but they are late to the budget as the meeting was held on Wednesday night to make final discussion and final communications to the budget. So Counselor Arigo, if you'd like to read briefly every item, and then we'll go on if there are any items that need to be discussed after he finishes all of them, we can take them up. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. And the chair, the chairman of Ways and Means is more than willing to go through the cuts that were made. In fact, after looking at the transfers, I think that, the transfers that are being, that we voted on earlier tonight, I think the chair of Ways and Means might be, might have some more places that we could potentially cut. With that said, I will go through again, if folks want to go to page 26 of their budget, you'll see the workers' comp unemployment line item and the finance director's budget. And if you flip back a couple of pages to the, to the overview of, of this, of the director of finances budget, you'll see the workers' comp unemployment was budgeted last year at $60,000. The actual year-to-date was $18,000. Madam President, I would ask that all members who are interested in hearing about my cuts sit down and listen to my cuts.
Yes, Counselor, and I appreciate that you're taking the time to do this, so you don't have to be as in-depth, seeing as we've went over this and it was televised. So if you'd like to read through them without actually flipping through the budget, and just maybe say, you know, this is number one, it was because of this and this, this is our rationale behind it, it was voted out unanimously, or whatever the issue, I think that would be the most efficient way to handle it.
Thank you, Madam President. I think, I think it would, it would heed each, each member of the council to actually sit down and listen.
Just maybe in the chair, I agree with the chair, everybody should be sitting down and listening, but the point is, if he goes to each one, we're going to vote on one, ask you this explanation, why not just go across and vote on it, instead of going all the way back and then vote individually on them? I mean, it might make it easier. Right.
So let's let him read them, and if there are any issues with them, we'll decide at that point. But if there are no issues, we can vote it as one. If there are issues, we can separate them.
Okay.
To Chairman.
All right. So for those members reading along, we have an $88,000 reduction in the workers' comp unemployment line item. This was a line item that was budgeted last year for $60,000. The actual year-to-date for fiscal year 13 was $18,000. Through discussion with the director of finance, it was made clear that although there's a potential for this money to be, to be spent, none of the potential people who might use this money or apply for this money have actually applied yet. So my request was to, to make an $88,000 cut to this line item. And I will, I will mention that at the, at the end of last night's meeting, the mayor himself actually said that these were cuts that he could live with. So I do want members who were not in attendance last night to keep that in mind. The next line item is the page 37, which is an amount of $90,000, reducing the insurance line item in the auditor's office. This was a line item that had significantly jumped from $550,000 last year to $690,000 this year. So actually, the, with the cut, there's still a $50,000 increase over last year's budget amount, and this year's fiscal year-to-date is around $545,000. The next line item is the streetlights line item in DPW, page 95. This line item was one of the, one place, and you'll, and you'll find the next couple of line items that we go through actually had transfers earlier in the year. There was a higher amount budgeted than what was needed, and that is, that has gone on for the last couple of fiscal years, so that is why this cut was proposed. Next one is public building heat, and that was a cut of $30,000, and that's on page And previously, the city had spent about, an average of about $60,000 a year. We are, my, my, my recommendation was to cut this down to $80,000 a year, $80,000 for the year, and the fiscal year-to-date was $50,000, so I think we could, we could live with that cut. And finally, the last two were rubbish collection and rubbish disposal. These line items have, again, been over budget the last couple of years. We transferred money out of these line items in the, earlier this year, and, and I want to remind members that with single-stream recycling, these line items should be actually decreasing. We should be seeing savings in these line items. So again, these were, these were cuts that the mayor said himself he could live with. This represents a 0.03% reduction in the budget, but I think that although that may seem miniscule, the, the, the meaning of it and the idea of having to maybe save a little bit of money from having to dip into the stabilization fund, in fact, I, I would say that if I were given the proper amount of time with this budget, I could have found a little bit more, I'm sure. But those are the cuts. I hope that the council can see the wisdom of the chair of Ways and Means, who spend an awful lot of time looking at this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So at this time, the way I will handle the vote on this-
Madam President, at this time, I move to make a cut. I put a motion in.
Counselor, if you'd please let me finish my statement for the way I want to handle the meeting. I want to hold these in first, and then yours will be held after as a late motion, because these are already put in as part of it. So we're going to go through these individually, and then you're more than welcome to make any motions you'd like.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
So since I believe, if we look at this by department, some of the DPW ones, such as trash and lights, kind of seem relative, and I don't see a lot of dispute about them. So it's my recommendation that we vote on those as one. So maybe go down, so finance would be one, then auditing one, we'll vote as the DPW is one, and then the solicitor, police, and inspectional services separate. Does anyone have a problem with that? All right. So at this time, I would ask the clerk to take a roll call of the first, which would be the workers' comp.
Reduction to the fiscal year 2014 budget by $88,000 under the workers' comp unemployment line. Counselor Arigo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Corregio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patches absent. Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ridden?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, Council President Novosel, I'm sorry, Council, Council Novoselski is absent, and Council President Gigno.
Yes.
Yes, the reduction to $88,000 is approved.
Thank you. So the next item on here would be the insurance. Do any councils have questions specifically pertaining to insurance?
I would just, I'd just like to make one comment, because I'm actually going to vote in a negative on this.
Yes, Counselor.
It was clearly said by the inspectional services, and this happens every year, I agree with that, but, you know, it was said even by the chair of Ways and Means, that some of this stuff may be during the course of the year put back in, you know, but, so my thing is, I'm not going to cut just to cut. We know what the price is of this, it's going to cost us that, so my vote will be no on this. Thank you.
Counselor, at this time, I would ask the clerk to take a roll call for this cut?
On the reduction of $90,000 from the insurance appropriation account under auditing. Counselor Arigo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Corregio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.[1792.91]
Yes, councillor Zambudo.
Yes, councillor Patches absent.
Yes.
Councillor Penta.
Yes, and councillor Novoselski is absent, and council president Janino.
No.
No, councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Riordan.
Yes, the $10,000 increase has been approved. This is on for the -- this is for the $10,000 increase under the city solicitor salaries. Councillor Regal.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patches absent. Councillor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and councillor Novoselski is absent, and council president Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the $10,000 increase has been approved. This next item on the agenda is for the Police Department. It was made by councillor Guanasso in order to enforce a recent ordinance that we have put in place. So are there any questions of the council? So we'll call the roll on that.
This is for an increase in $800 to the Police Maintenance Equipment line item. Councillor Regal.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patch is absent. Councillor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and councillor Novoselski is absent, and council president Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the $10,000 increase has been approved.
This next item on the agenda is for the Police Department. It was made by councillor Guanasso in order to enforce a recent ordinance that we have put in place. So are there any questions of the council? So we'll call the roll on that.
This is for an increase in $800 to the Police Maintenance Equipment line item. Councillor Regal.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patch is absent. Councillor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselski is absent, and council president Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the $800 appropriation has been approved.
And this next item actually could have probably been paired with that, but since it's a separate department, we'll leave them separate. But this is also for a supply to enforce this ordinance. At this time, questions? So the roll, please.
This is for the increase of the Office Supplies Account for Inspection Services, Health Division, in the amount of $800. Councillor Regal.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patches absent. Councillor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and councillor Novoselski is absent, and council president Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the $10,000 increase has been approved.
And this next item actually could have probably been paired with that, but since it's a separate department, we'll leave them separate. But this is also for a supply to enforce this ordinance. At this time, questions? So the roll, please.
This is for the increase of the Office Supplies Account for Inspection Services, Health Division, in the amount of $800. Councillor Regal.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patches absent. Councillor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and councillor Novoselski is absent, and council president Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the $800 appropriation has been approved.
And this next item actually could have probably been paired with that, but since it's a separate department, we'll leave them separate. But this is also for a supply to enforce this ordinance. At this time, questions? So the roll, please.
This is for the increase of the Office Supplies Account for Inspection Services, Health Division, in the amount of $800. Councillor Regal.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patches absent. Councillor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselski is absent, and council president Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the $800 appropriation has been approved.
So this was the last item on the agenda from the report of the Ways and Means Committee. At this time, I will entertain any discussion of the council. If there are any other issues, councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I move to cut a complete line item out of the city council budget, the longevity, $40,000 -- excuse me. I move to eliminate the longevity from the elected officials from the city council. I -- well, I guess if we have some discussion afterwards, but that's my motion.
At this time, I'll entertain a discussion, I guess. I assume this is going to be a topic of discussion, so we'll go around again. Anyone on the side have any comments they'd like to make? Any other councillors have comments?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Okay. Roll call.
On to reduce the longevity line item from the city council budget in the amount of $40,600. Councillor Regal.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patches absent. Councillor Penta.
No.
No, councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Zambudo.
No.
No, councillor Novoselski is absent, and council president Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the reduction has been approved.
Thank you. At this time, we will discuss the DPW cuts, which include the Streetlights, Heat, Rubbish Disposal and Collection. Are there any questions of the council? I'd ask the Clerk to take the roll.
On the reduction in the amounts of $84,000, $30,000, $127,980 and $100,000 from the DPW budget. Councillor Regal.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patches absent. Councillor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and councillor Novoselski is absent, and council president Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the $10,000 increase has been approved.
This next item on the agenda is for the Police Department. It was made by councillor Guanasso in order to enforce a recent ordinance that we have put in place. So are there any questions of the council? So we'll call the roll on that.
This is for an increase in $800 to the Police Maintenance Equipment line item. Councillor Regal.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patch is absent. Councillor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and councillor Novoselski is absent, and council president Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the $800 appropriation has been approved.
And this next item actually could have probably been paired with that, but since it's a separate department, we'll leave them separate. But this is also for a supply to enforce this ordinance. At this time, questions? So the roll, please.
This is for the increase of the Office Supplies Account for Inspection Services, Health Division, in the amount of $800. Councillor Regal.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patches absent. Councillor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and councillor Novoselski is absent, and council president Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the $800 appropriation has been approved.
So this was the last item on the agenda from the report of the Ways and Means Committee. At this time, I will entertain any discussion of the council. If there are any other issues, councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I move to cut a complete line item out of the city council budget, the longevity, $40,000 -- excuse me. $40,600. I move to eliminate the longevity from the elected officials from the city council. I -- well, I guess if we have some discussion afterwards, but that's my motion.
At this time, I'll entertain a discussion, I guess. I assume this is going to be a topic of discussion, so we'll go around again. Anyone on the side have any comments they'd like to make? Any other councillors have comments?
Roll call.
Roll call.
On to reduce the longevity line item from the city council budget in the amount of $40,600. Councillor Regal.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patches absent. Councillor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and councillor Novoselski is absent, and council president Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the line item has been reduced from the budget in the amount of $40,600.
Madam President.
Yes, councillor.
I have a question. And I'm looking over the city council budget, and I see a -- what appears to be a salary increase for city councillors. And I would like to, first of all, I'd like a question as to the legality of that. And secondly, I'd like to make a motion that we reduce that amount thus by not granting a pay raise to the city councillors.
So councillor, you're recommending that we level fund that item?
Level fund the previous year, yes.
Okay. Is there a specific item number that we need to refer to for this? Mr. Mayor, do you have a comment?
Madam President, no. No, I was not sure. I thought all the cuts were done, and I was going to go back to my letter, my late communication for tonight. So -- pardon me? Yeah, absolutely. No, I'll just stand here and wait.
All right. Thank you. Councillor Haas.
I'd like to, you know, since we're in the cutting mode up here for the city council because some councils are a little ticked off, I'd like to eliminate all of our expense account, 100%. And that's in the form of motion. Since we're going to get rid of the longevity, let's get rid of everything.
Roll call.
There's one motion on the floor, Madam President. That's councillor Powers' motion.
I just did that.
So at this time, we have a motion on the floor to keep the line item as level-funded so we could -- what's the will of the council? Would we like to continue this motion?
Roll call, Madam President. Roll call.
So at this time, Madam Clerk, can we take the roll for councillor Powers' motion to level fund that line item?
This is fantastic.
Madam President, could I just -- I'm not 100% sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm not, you know, I'd have to double-check, but I believe that, and I, you know, with all due respect to councillor Zambudo's motion, I believe that the longevity is by ordinance. So I don't think you can just arbitrarily cut it like that. I think it's got to be, has to go to a public hearing, and actually, it would be an ordinance change. So I don't believe that you can actually just cut that line. So, you know, I think before you guys go forward and start discussing further cuts, you might want to, you know, deliberate, put some sort of, you know, if it comes down to a motion or something like that, I think then, you know, maybe you could discuss it at that point. But I don't think the vote that was actually taken can be taken where it is an ordinance change. So, I think, you know, I think you might have to reflect back, and maybe... And this is something that doesn't necessarily have to be done at tonight's meeting. You can always take that up, so... Madam President, if it's appropriate, I'll withdraw the motion. I agree with... I move to reconsider.
If I have to speak on the... Mr. Mayor, I do appreciate your comments, and I agree with you, and I believe that some of the comments that have been made tonight were more statements than motions for the best interest of the budget, which I'm disappointed to see. But if it is the will of the councilor to withdraw the motion...
Well, we have to reconsider it, I believe. So, let's reconsider.
So, for reconsideration?
I move to reconsider the motion, because he is correct. I believe it does have to be an ordinance change. Let me reconsider and remove it, will you? Okay, so let's...
It's out of order.
Reconsideration, it fails, so it's successful and it's... Let the clerk dictate what we're doing here.
Counselor, the motion is out of order, so we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. I believe that there is another motion on the table by Counselor Powers to level fund a line item, so at this time, we'll take the role on Counselor Powers' motion to level fund.
I think that's also under the same ordinance, so I think this is something, quite honestly, that, you know, you'd have to go to a public hearing on where it's all controlled by ordinance. So...
Counselor Arigo?
Madam President, I would hope that, you know, the spirit of everybody wanting to cut everything, I wish everyone was around yesterday. But I will say that, you know, instead of grandstanding with false motions about... False amendments to cut the budget, I do hope that members come through with maybe an ordinance change. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So, Counselor Powers?
I'll concede and withdraw the motion.
Thank you, Counselor. So, at this time, I'd like to ask any members of the council if there are any amendments to the budget that they would like to make at this time that are within our power to make and in consideration of a working budget right now.
None.
Okay. So, we'll take up the late communication from the mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Madam President, thank you very much. And before I go on, there's really only one more issue that I'd like to address, but before I do, I would like once again to apologize to the city council for the late delivery of our budget. I think Counselor Riordan had an excellent point that whoever next year's chairman may be, if it's Counselor Arigo again, or whoever, I'm not sure how it plays out in terms of who takes over, you know, certain committees, but whoever it is, it's probably not a bad idea to lay out those dates. And I'm sure next year, given that we've already been through the... You know, we're obviously going to try to improve the budget as much as we can, but the hard work is done. We've pretty much laid out a budget that we felt is going to be much more user-friendly for the city council to use, and I think, and I hope and trust that it was for you. I know that, you know, the city council's job is to make cuts, and these cuts are cuts that I will absolutely try to live with. If not, as you know, sometimes we go through this transfer process where if we have any overages, we'll try to cover as best we can what we have, or if we have to and we're completely desperate, we'll come up and we'll ask the council for further appropriation. So... But I hope that's not to be the case. The last... My late communication has to deal with balancing the budget. Now, we've gone through the submission of the budget. The council, in their wisdom, has made the cuts that they want to make. But now, in order to help us, we need up... What we would like is the authorization to take up to $1.5 million out of stabilization based on the final figures that we get back from the state with regard to our cherry sheet. We don't have that yet. We don't have our new growth figures yet. So, you know, we would like the ability so that we know for sure prior to our conference call with Moody's on Monday that we have the ability to balance our budget. And as I said, and we could talk about at length about what's good policy and, you know, we can agree to maybe disagree on certain things, but the reality of it is, we cannot balance our budget unless we get a favorable vote on using the stabilization funds to help us with this. So, I mean, in the spirit of cooperation, I'm asking for the city council to approve up to $1.5 million, whatever that shortfall is, once we have our final figures, so that we can balance our budget. Otherwise, the, you know, the other side of that is if I can't get this vote, I'm going to have to cut $1.5 million somewhere. So, in addition to what we've already cut, so we... You know, it really puts us in a very difficult position if I do not receive a favorable vote on this. So, I'm asking the city council to approve this authorization to allow us up to $1.5 million.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And at this time, I'd also like to really thank you and the Ways and Means, not only committee but chair, because you both have put... Mr. Anzoni, you've put an extensive amount of time and effort into this budget to get to this point that we are in the meeting. So, I think that it's really quite a feat that we've accomplished as a first time as a new council and a new mayor, so I really do appreciate this from everyone here tonight. At this time, I will entertain...
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor.
I'd like to make a comment also on the way you conducted yourself under very, what I would say, stressful conditions. I think you did an admirable job, and I would certainly recommend you for higher office someday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Arigo?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to... I just want clarification. So, in addition to the $500,000 that the council just cut, we're going to need a full $1.5. So, initially, we would have had to go in for $2 million of stabilization money, because we were told initially it was $300,000. Then we were told it was $1 million. Last night, we were told it was up to a million and a half. Now, tonight, we're being told the total amount would have been $2 million of stabilization money that we would need to balance the budget.
That's an up to figure. We don't... Like I say, we don't have our cherry sheet figures yet, so I'm not sure where it's going to... I mean, I could come back and ask if you want to make it 1.3, or, you know, and then I'll... But this just gives us the ability. We're only going to be able to take what it's going to... What is required to balance our budget. So, you know, really, I mean, if I said 3 million, it really is kind of semantics almost. It's not going to... We're only going to take what's needed to balance. So, if you want to, like, give it to us in drips and drabs and pieces, I can keep coming up and asking, but this is what we felt safe in asking for. So, it's up to the council if you want to make amendments to that.
I think one comment, again, I'd like to make is that on the use of the 1.5, while we came up with 1.5 million, originally, yes, it was 300,000. We were looking at the PEC committee coming up with some 1.2 million. However, they haven't responded as yet, and rather than wait on that, especially where I have the conference call on Monday, we felt it would be better... The mayor felt it would be better to use the 1.5 million. If we got that, and I explained this previously, if we got the 1 point... Say, for example, if we got 1.2 million from the PEC committee, actually, that's redundant because it's the Public Employee Committee, so from the PEC, if we got 1.2 million dollars from them, as I explained before, $700,000 of that would have to go into the school budget. So, if... What we would then have to do is, then, we would have to appropriate another $700,000 to the school department budget, and the Change the Schedule 19. So, with that bit of confusion, where in the past, the school department has front-ended the... Has front-ended the premium holiday on their Schedule 19. However, it wasn't done this year for whatever reason. So, with that... But I do stress very much that the first question Moody's is going to ask me on Monday and the mayor to ask us, do we balance our budget? And do we have a balanced budget?
If I could just add to that, too, just for the edification of the council, this is taking into consideration us not taking a vote on the premium holiday, because that could take some time. It's not definitive. I'd rather... We'll cross that bridge when we have to. So... Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, councilors. We have a few other councilors that would like to speak really quick. Counselor Haas, I know, has been waiting very patiently, so Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Madam President. As you know, Mr. Mayor, I'm against utilizing stabilization funds for recurring expenses. And you explain yourself quite well during the budget deliberations. You know, you have 10 firemen whose grant has expired, and you want to retain those people. I thought, as Counsel Arigo indicated, that during the budget deliberations, we were nowhere near 1.5 million. And now, I understand what you just said, okay? I accept that. Now, if the cherry sheet comes in higher, are you going to retransfer that money out of the stabilization fund, back into the stabilization fund?
Yes, we will. You know, we will only use what we have to to balance our budget, but because we have this conference call with Moody's on Monday...
Right.
We have to be able to tell them that the budget is balanced, and this is the only way that we can assure ourselves with full confidence that we can.
Yeah. And as you know, the city council, you know, we get elected by all the taxpayers, as you do, and we have to be aware of what the tax implications will be in the tax rate.
Listen...
The water rates we approved are 6.6 percent, which is going to be a major hit to the water users in the community, so I think somewhere down the line, we're going to have to really look at streamlining city government. Not that it's already streamlined, because I believe it is as a former mayor, George, myself, and Tommy, and we have to watch where we're adding people into the city budget, because that just can perpetuate that cost. And if we have money within the budget to do that, so be it. That's one thing. But if we're using stabilization fund via free cash, I'll be against that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilors, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor.
I move that we approve the mayor's recommendation.
Thank you, Counselor. We... There were just a couple of things that were added late to the budget that we have to vote on.
I know, I added them.
Yep. So, before we vote on the final budget, we're going to vote on some late amendments to the budget that were placed... Were given to the council on June 18th and June 24th. So, I asked the city clerk to please read them, and then we will vote on them accordingly. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
There were seven different amendments proposed by the mayor. First was to break the engineering department out on its own. Number two was to increase inspectional services weights and measures hours from 35 to 39. That would increase the salary line item by $7,332. Number three was an increase in the inspectional services department, Health Division, for the principal clerk. That would increase the salary line item by $10,287. Number four was to increase the council salary line item for the clerk of committee from four to five. That would increase the salary line item by $5,573. And I believe Chairman Arigo had reported this out unfavorably from the committee, but this is to increase the office supplies account of the city council by $15,840. Number six, addition of other post-employment benefits line item in the amount of $20,000.
Point of information, Madam President. We've already done this. We've already done this.
They have to be taken up separately because they're late amendments to the budget. They weren't submitted in the original budget.
They weren't voted upon?
Number... And the last, number seven, is a new footnote on page one under Collector Treasurer. Double asterisk note, position was added to manage 40U invoicing and reconciliation.
Madam Clerk, I just have one question, too. Since we met in the subcommittee meeting, we talked about removing one item from the office supplies into a separate account for the trucks. Is that in the submission? Sorry, Mr. Anzoni might be able to answer this.
You're talking about the GPS system for the trucks and the maintenance. We kept it in the office supplies for this year, but we agreed to move that out for next year.
Perfect, thank you. Just wasn't sure if it would be considered later separate, so we'll take a roll call on those individually. Madam Clerk. Well, one of them was voted unfavorably by the council.
Take that one up separately. Take the council supplies separately.
So, can we vote on any that were voted out unanimously, and any that had a dispute will vote out separately?
Just to be clear, Madam President, this will be a vote for everything except the office supplies account for the city council?
Yes. Okay. Can I ask for a roll call?
Roll call on the additional amendments. Counselor Arigo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky is absent, and Counsel President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the additions have been approved.
At this time, I'd ask a roll call be taken up on the second item that was not voted on yet by the committee.
This is for the increase in the office supplies account for the city council in the amount of $15,840. Counselor Arigo?
No.
No, Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
No.
No, Counselor Haas?
No.
No, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
No.
No, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky is absent. And Counsel President Janino?
No.
No, the motion fails.
Thank you. So, at this time, if there are any questions of the mayor's presentation for the final budget?
I just basically have one. It's basically a comment, and I know the mayor, if anybody, the stabilization fund that basically you almost created, if you didn't need the money, I'm sure you wouldn't take it. But just to get back to the state budget, they're not even done with their budget. I mean, the governor sent a $2 billion increase. I'm sure the legislature is going to win that fight, probably going to be a $500 million increase. I know there's a letter that came from the State House saying the Chapter 90 money, which that was the most thing they were confident in to increase at 50 percent. We last year got $780,000. This year, we're getting $500 and something thousand dollars, a reduction of $200,000, when we're supposed to get an increase of almost $400,000. So, I would not keep that much faith in the state to... Trust me, we could be getting less than we think. If they cut the one thing that they said they were increasing, it doesn't look too good. So, with that being said, I feel confident. And the other thing, you're only going to use it if you need it. Is that correct? So, it lays in there until you have to use it.
Yeah, we're only going to use up to the amount to balance the budget, that's all.
Thank you.
But just to avoid having to come back, and like I say, we're not asking for that premium holiday because it, you know, we can't balance a budget on a hope that we're going to get a vote passed through the committee.
I got it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. So, at this time, I'll ask Madam Clerk to call the roll.
That the city council authorized the mayor to use up to $1.5 million from the stabilization fund to balance the FY '14 budget. Counselor Arigo?
No.
No, Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky is absent, and Counsel President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the authorization has been granted.
Thank you very much for that vote, and I appreciate it. It's been, you know, kind of a challenge, I think, for all of us to get on the same page because of, as I say, all the things that have happened between transfers and the budget. But at the end of the day, I think that we came up with a budget that the people, that the, you know, that our residents will be satisfied with the services we're able to provide. And from your standpoint, you know, you've made cuts that I think is going to have an impact overall on the overall taxes that people pay as well. So, I think everyone's done their job, and I appreciate your efforts in all of this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And at this time, you know, I'd really like to, again, thank our department heads who took part of this, that took time out of their schedules to come present before us, our Director of Finance, our other department heads that have been here since the beginning, our mayor, the clerk's office, for all of their hard work and effort in being here with us. And I really do think that we just voted on something that was in the best interest of our community.
Madam President, I'm not sure... Are we supposed to have a vote to approve the final budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We're getting there.
Thank you. I didn't mean to be rude.
So, at this time, if I could finish, we will call the roll for our final budget.
Oh, Madam President, before you do that, can I take a vote, spend a room, and take a vote on reconsideration or prevail on the 1.5 of the stabilization?
So, is a motion on the floor? To call a roll? Oh. So, all in favor, all opposed?
Thank you.
Recreation does not prevail. Reconsideration does not prevail. Sorry, guys, I'm new at this. It's a very stressful day. Excuse my grammar. So, this is on the final budget for the fiscal year 2014 as amended. If we can call the roll.
On the FY '14 budget in the amount of... Oh, as amended, this is in the amount of $153,595,982. Counselor Arigo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky is absent, and Counsel President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the FY '14 budget has been approved.
Motion adjourned.